Thank you for attending the August 26th meeting of Brandon's Select Board. Called the Board to Order. First item means to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion? The agenda as it was posted.
Okay.
Mr. Wyman moves to adopt the agenda as it was posted, and Mr. Bailey seconds. Any additions to make or changes? If not, all in favor of the agenda as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item two, unless there's objection, we'll take approval of the minutes of August 12th and August 20th together. What's the pleasure of the board on the minutes as they were submitted?
I'm delighted to take it separately.
Okay. Item one, item A, minutes of August 12th. What's the pleasure of the board on the minutes of August 12th?
I'm moving.
Mr. Bailey moves to approve.
I second.
Mr. Guy will second. Discussion? No discussion. Any errors or additions? If not, all in favor of the minutes of August 12th as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item B, the minutes of August 20th.
I think I'm motion to approve, but I would have to... Where it says Tracy Wyman, anything where it says just Tracy Wyman, it should be Wyman-Frazier or Wyman-Timber.
Ah, okay.
It's not personally from myself, it's nothing besides complete.
Okay, can we get a second motion approval? Mr. Wyman moves to approve, Mr. Bailey seconds. Mr. Wyman suggests when it refers to Tracy Wyman taking over operational transportation, if we change to...
Wyman-Timber.
Wyman-Timber. That's good for clarity. Thank you. Any other errors or additions? If not, all in favor of the August 20th minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Bailey seconds. Item three, the town manager's report, Mr. Appleton.
This is my report for the weeks of August 12th and 19th. Segment six, two week look ahead. They're going to be improving crosswalks and traffic cones within the segment E near Crescent Park. Doing pavement in front of Jiffy Mart, pavement markings. Foundation improvements in Crescent Park and Central Park along with brick and masonry pavers. You guys take a look, the water fountains have been powder coated and they look really nice. Drive away runs, top soiled seed areas to finish areas in various locations. Setting precast concrete retaining wall across the road here. Curves and sidewalks within segment A. And generally from the fire station north to segment B and C around Maze and the Brandon House of Pizza. Fire Harbor Bank and various intermittent locations. Continued installation retaining wall in front of the Brandon House of Pizza. Instal water sewer mains and services with stormwater within segment A. Rockway box cut material within segment A to prepare for paving. And retaining wall on High Street, Franklin Street area. Just a quick little verbiage of what about Route 73? For paving, they're doing some ledge work up on, about halfway up there. And they're gonna hopefully have the paving wrapped up here. Other happenings, applied for a grant with the Lake Champlain Basin Program for stormwater mitigation. So fun work that was addressed in our stormwater master plan. We're hoping to get two projects done out of that, and it's 100% grant, so we have a match on it, which is nice. And the Class 1 paving project that was scheduled for spring of '20 for our top course on Park Street, Champlain Street, Marble Street. They pushed that back to '21 so that we have plenty of time to get Park Street done next year. So we're very thankful of that.
That's excellent.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll have pavement on there for the winter, it just won't be the ride course. So it'll... I'm glad to do that. And that's from the other half.
Thanks, Mr. Appleton. Questions for the town manager from the board? Mr. Bullock? No, any questions, Mr. Bailey?
No, I have none.
Mr. Wyman. Questions for the town manager from the public? Mr. Jones?
It's not really a question, it's just the fact that we're looking good. You know, progress is looking good, it's coming together. It's a bit wild, but it's gonna be a great thing when it's finished. You know, you just really have to appreciate and be patient. We've all done home improvements and they don't always get done in a hurry. So yeah, it's looking good.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other public, other questions for the town manager from the public?
I asked you, we're in the process of having the Miami Purchase Come to Town survey. It was as is where is when we purchased it. And the surveyors are, they're not finding any of the old survey vans because they've all been torn out. And some of them were in the car, some of them were in the motor station. And I'm just wondering if all the pins along Route 7 have been removed? And our section is not finished yet, so are they putting pins back in as they finish up?
If there were pins, when DuBois and King did the survey in 2005, where they found them, that are reset, replace and reset. We might have lost some in some areas from flooding or issues, you know, it's kind of hard. But the ones that were visible will be reset, so.
Well, as I said, our section's not, but I was just wondering about all of it.
Good question, good answer.
Good to know.
Other public questions for the town manager, Mr. Powell?
This pains me, so I'm going to read this statement. I'm reading this statement so that I can verify that it is recorded in the town minutes exactly as I have stated. I've heard from several sources that a town employee who was instrumental to the Route 7 project has resigned after being paid $20,000 for services he has not rendered. Will you address this in open session? These rumors either need to be put to rest. If they're true, the gravity of the situation is appropriate for open session since it involves townspeople's money and the town itself.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. The board will confirm that Harold Berlett has resigned his employment with the town of Brandon. The town has met all of its legal obligations to Mr. Berlett. The town appreciates all the progress resulting from Mr. Berlett's hard work while he served as Brandon's Director of Public Works. And the board expects that at an appropriate time, additional public statements will be made. But we're not prepared at this time.
So you're saying that the town refuses or cannot comment on this? I specifically left his name out, so you could not make the excuse that it was discussing a town employee in open session?
We're going to, we're gonna abide by the statement that we have just made. I'm gonna confirm that information, it's being transparent with the voters, with the taxpayers. Mr. Berlett is not employed by the town any longer. The board will have further information when the board receives further information. We expect it to be seen.
Well, it's a matter of course that he's left and he resigned, or it's understood you were gonna terminate him. What we really want is a comment about the $20,000 for services he has not rendered.
I have no comment at this time about that, and I will not even accede to the premise of the question.
You know, I'm like a pit bull. Once I get into it, I'm not gonna let it go until I have a satisfactory answer.
We appreciate that, and the Select Board also will look into this until the point when we have a satisfactory resolution. Additional comment from the public or questions from the public, this will be related to the town manager, primarily his report, other activities? If not, we'll move along to item four, public comment and participation. We start with the board, Mr. Wyman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put it back to the minutes of special meeting again.
August 20th?
August 20th.
Yes.
The other thing that I noticed in there, but also what I have it, that I recused myself and I did leave the room. It is not in the minutes.
That's not reflected in the minutes. There's no objection, I'm sure from the board. So we will note in the minutes of August 20th that Mr. Wyman accused himself from the entire meeting, right?
Yes.
And left the room.
Well, recused himself from the open part of the executive session, which is the second half of that meeting.
Right, recused himself from the open part of the meeting, participated in the executive session. Mr. Bass?
Who cares?
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Public participation will be next, and I'll just remind everyone of the Brandon Select Board public participation policy. All of the meetings of the Select Board are meetings of the Select Board in the public, and they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public are afforded reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the Select Board as long as order is maintained. Comment by any members of the public must be addressed to the chair or to the body as a whole, and not to any individual member of the Select Board or to any member of the public. Members of the public must be acknowledged by the chair before speaking. If a member of the public has already spoken on a topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others have first been given the opportunity to comment. Order and decorum shall be observed by all present. Is there any public comment this evening on any topic that doesn't appear on the agenda? So this would be not Town Farm Road signage, not the approval for paving, and not the warrant. Any other topics anybody wants to discuss tonight?
To continue to find out what happened on Basin, Old Basin.
Okay, an update on the Old Basin roads situation? Do you have anything, Mr. Appleton, you can update?
So I do. Actually, Tom, our help officer sent me a message today that our zoning administrator's letter to the landowner was returned undeliverable. The family that's living in the camper will be moving out in the next few weeks. He did speak with her again. As far as sewer journey thing, they said they have a compost toilet in the camper, and Tom did not see any signs of sewers being dumped anywhere in the area. They were totally getting to clean up garbage and left a voicemail with this information. So Tom has been following up, Jeff has followed the process of how to notice people, and...
Did he go and see the toilet?
Excuse me?
Did he go and see the toilet?
Why would he go and see the toilet?
I suppose we got four different scenarios up until that time. We had a facility was coming to collect whatever. He was taking it to a facility, that he was taking it to a campground. Now we've got a composting toilet or whatever. A lot of different scenarios, none of which were verified.
Our health officer just verified to me that he was up there.
I can tell you really do, you know, I mean, the idea being, has anybody actually seen, you know, asked to go in? Did I see the toilet, and I see a receipt, you know, who does he add some money?
Well, I think that's a huge missed on mine, that's how a health officer does his job. I mean, the zoning administrator can't judge in anybody's house either.
But I know, he just asked.
You know, they've been following up, there's only so much we can do legally. We can't just force people to leave their land. We're following up on the trash, we're following up on the issues with folks living there in an RV. Tom and Jeff have been very diligent in following up with Mr. Frazier and trying to get what is provided to him. And next, we'll have to send the zoning violation letter probably through our police department to get a handover to track the owner. That's the next step, so. We have to follow, we have to follow the process, it's in our land use ordinance. You know, that's, those are the rules that are given to us, and per statute. So, you know, they've done everything they can, they're trying to get it cleaned up, but, you know, it's, it doesn't happen in a day unfortunately.
I still remember a camper that was on the corner that was off the quick, but then you got, and then you go out. That was, there were two kids, but I'm just saying. Now, off the quick, that was, boy, this one is taking off longer.
People react in different ways to attempts to enforce. So the town's next effort is going to need to hand deliver the letter that was undeliverable?
Well, it has to be delivered through someone that...
When?
If this... The zoning administrator works for the Select Board, not for the town manager. The zoning administrator is the one that sent the letter, certified it. It came back to us last Thursday.
Right.
It's been three days. And will get hand delivered by a law enforcement official as soon as they can.
Did you have, well, I guess I'm, if there's some doubt about the legitimacy of the composting toilet, if there's some responsibility for the health code officer to verify, in fact, it's...
I mean, there's no way knowing where his, his water goes. You know, supposedly he had a showering, but I don't think so, there's no water like 50 out there.
I guess the point is, if they had a composting toilet, why didn't they say so right from the beginning? Why all these different stories?
First. I don't think, I don't think you're asking a question that Mr. Appleton could answer, that any of the board could answer. It's not our place to guess these people's intentions, it's not our place to guess...
But nobody's checking on what they're saying or what they're being told.
Clearly, clearly the town health officer is checking on what they're saying because he's visiting the property.
When I spoke to Jeff and I asked him if he had done receipts or, you know, whatever, some verification that a facility was coming to collect, he said no. Did he get a receipt of verification that he was taking? He said no. You're not verifying what they're being told, that's all we're asking. Why aren't they verifying, finding out for sure?
I think that all we can expect is that the town health officer, which is not Jeff, which is Tom.
Tom.
I think that we could expect to hear from Tom the results of the next visit that he makes.
He's Sunday this today, so I don't have the opportunity to speak on personally today. I don't know when he went up there, but that's the latest, that's the latest information I have.
He said it didn't last few days, because he left a message on my machine too, because I happened to see them in the Jiffy Mart. And I spoke to him about it, and he did go up within the last few days to check on whatever he was told about the composting toilet and whatever, but I was hoping he'd hear from us, but no.
I don't, I don't believe that Tom could actually, unless he offered to let him in as his trailer, that he could go in.
In his permission, at least he could try.
I mean, he could ask permission, but he refused to let him in.
Exactly, right, but at least he could try and ask.
Okay, well, the appropriate town employees are aware of the situation. They're acting on, they're acting on the situation with the occupants, and I think that we need to let the process continue until they elevate it to a Select Board level or a State Department level.
One other thing, he's moving his trailer, I don't know. Right, he's moving the house he's living, right, whatever he's in. And I guess Joe would be notified? Is the town still doing that, notifying the many landlords?
I don't, I don't find a process, you know, if there's a process, you put a mobile home, it's up to, about from the Y. No.
What?
No.
If he, if he, if they put a removal in a mobile home from the...
He said what, that's what Tom said, he's going to remove.
Yeah, yeah, but there wouldn't be any, they wouldn't notify their landlord if they moved a mobile home.
Not a mobile home, his, his, the trailer, the one that...
The camper?
No.
No, the trailer they put on the property?
Yeah. He's going to replace that, he's replacing that.
If it's the same footprint on the same pad in the same bedrooms, no.
Okay.
Not only if it's larger, and if they're pouring on a pad.
But the town will make sure that all zoning ordinances and everything is legitimate or being followed or legal?
I hate to answer that question because there's a, there's a concern with where, when, when a joint landowner doesn't particularly care for the way that a person maintains their property. We've had this issue on very few places in town through the years. And we can't issue a zoning permit, we can't issue a zoning violation unless the zoning violation is actually a violation that is not in conformance with our land use ordinance. To replace, remove and replace a mobile home, if it fits their criteria of the same size and everything, it's not, it's not, it doesn't even really need to go any further. If they decide to pour a larger pad and they put other bedrooms in, and they come in to get a permit for it, there will either be, well, right now still, we have to send letters to the joint landowners if there's change in the use. Or if they're building a deck that's, you know, outside of our, then you would get noticed. If you disagree with what they do, then it would come to the Development Review Board. So then you would be an official here. But if it informs with what the town has allowed for, you know, whatever uses on the property, there are going to be in conformance, you know, and, I mean, it's a tricky thing because there are folks where, you know, I wouldn't want to be my neighbors either, but it, it happens, so.
No, I understand that, I just didn't under, I just thought that if he puts something new, that, you know...
If it's larger, if it's larger, they want to get permission to do it.
Very good, thank you. Other public comment, other items, other topics, Mr. Wyman?
Just want to remind everybody that this weekend, Labor Day weekend, we have, first, the many annual Rock Fest to end the summer, featuring some youth singers on Friday night at Estero Park, started at seven o'clock. And then on Saturday, we have four youth bands, two local, one from, one from Borla, another one from Edmonton that'll be performing, so it's gonna be a lot of fun. Great way to build community, get people together.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. So Estero Park Brandon Rock Fest this weekend.
Be there, B-square.
Other public comment? Other public comment, items not on the agenda, okay, if not, move along. Item five, Town Farm Road signage, I don't have any paperwork on this, do you want to just introduce?
Sure, so Tracy and I have kind of taken this one a little bit because of the complaints that he's received from folks on the Cape side of the road, and I've received quite a few as well. It's been an ongoing situation with, with the truck traffic coming in and out of gravel pit, and where the, how the, where the rest of this. You know, now, I mean, there's a few folks here that I think are probably more than happy to stay up there here, but we're seeing, you know, more trucks on the Cape portions of the road now where there are more houses, and folks are starting to complain about that. So the logical, we'll see, we'll get into a little more, but the shortest distance to get out of the gravel pit to the next town is taking literally. And, you know, we've had one, one person complain about it. I think we could come up with another solution, then not allowing trucks to go on that road, maybe lowering the speed limit. Might be helpful, but I think that what's going on now with the current situation, that it's, it's not helping, it's not working for anybody. So it's actually affecting more, more homes in town with the way the trucks are coming out of it now.
This one, do you have one too?
I know one of the things that was brought up when they did do this was the safety hazard. Or the safety issue of the trucks on that road. I believe if you counted the houses from the Leicester line to the gravel pit, I believe there's like 25.
Seventeen.
What's that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
I counted.
Did you count them? And the houses just to get to, I counted 53. I believe there was, I don't know, 30, I wanna say there was 30 or 32. That was, that's just to get to 53, that's not counting...
This is the paved part of Town Farm Road to Newton Road and then Newton Road?
Then Newton, that's correct. And I know that, you know, that some of those three went down, but it's still from there up through the development, near the road. All the traffic comes in and out of it, by the post office. My personal opinion is it's, it's a bigger safety hazard for trucks going that way than it is to go the other way.
I'm speaking with Sean, our highway foreman, on maintenance. He would rather grade the road a little more often than have to worry about fixing pavement. You know, this, we still have the issue with posting roads in the spring, but honestly, from last spring, we know why we do it. But, you know, Sean's fine with, if the grader has to go out there a few more times. And I think the speed would be, would be a big factor there.
That was one thing that Dave and I talked about, would be a, go to 20, 25, 25 down, 100.
And the previous springtime road postings before we changed the trucking sign, have those been observed? Have they been affected? I'm talking about maintaining the road or preserving the road structure.
Well, it depends on if people abide by them or not.
Well, that's a good answer.
We still get trucks that go down, so. I think we've, I think it's gotten better. I mean, last year was just, you know, the way that the rain and frost came, and the North Coast was safe at that point. But what you had, so. Spring posting is effective.
Does the, I don't want to put you on the spot, Chief Recal, but I see it here. To lower the speed limit from, is it 35 currently? To lower the speed limit would require a traffic study, or is it within the Select Board's purview?
It would, I mean, it should be done with a traffic service.
Should be done with a traffic service.
We'll check that, are we seeing it come up in the...
Oh, good. Any further contributions?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had those street pits there for a long, long time, and there's trucks going in and out of them all that time. I think there's probably increased use because of the Route 73 project and the Segment 6 project and whatever, even that's...
I mean, that was one of the things that I had said back when we took this. When this, when these projects are all done, right now, we've got two major projects with Segment 6 and 73 being repaved and reworked over the last two years, that there's been a lot, a tremendous amount of truck traffic. Once these projects are done, we're gonna go back to business as usual for what...
I think the 73 one is using that pit quite a bit.
Yeah, they're using that pit quite a bit.
One of them's by the man, and that Casellas is actually using the pit further down the road. So the Casella trucks are actually beyond designed anyway. But I think that if we look at the whole, you know, what's the best interest of the town, the shortest distance from Lester, they're coming in that way, is, is on the Town Farm Road. And, you know, we have no trucks on Richmond Road and Wheeler Road. And I believe that we could keep those there and use Town Farm and, you know...
Well, that was our original intent six months ago, and then we retired out of that and into going on the Bay Road instead of the dirt road. So I mean, I'm grateful for going back to the dirt roads and trying to get them to slow down. It's trying to get them to comply to that.
Well, I just, I mean, we have the 25, and we, you know, have some enforcement out there.
I don't believe that you'll see a majority of these trucks, they go much over 25 down through these roads. And yet they have to go fast when they're going a long way around to get their products the way they gotta get them. So we're making them go a long way on pavement, and they're going, they're gonna try to go quick. I mean, it, it's hard for them to sound like it's going faster, but I would, if they did a study out there with radar or whatever, I think they're gonna find the same thing that we found when we did the, up on Park Street, that your speed is not going to be anywhere near as high as people think they are.
I would like the board to move to some kind of stability on this because we can't just be changing posting and speed limits and trucking regulations based on whoever the last person was to come to a board meeting and complain. I think we need to kind of arrive at a solution, a stable solution. We've had conflicting recommendations frankly, from a previous public works director at different times. If we're going to go for trucks moving gravel or moving empty into that gravel on the dirt part of the road, I think we need to be ready to support whatever the present highway foreman is asking for for material and greater labor. That's part of the mix. I just, I just think people are owed some predictability as well, I suppose. Yes, sir.
I think, I think I'm the only one in this room that lives on Town Farm Road. I'm pretty sure, but I might be wrong. Let me ask you a question. Do you have trucks coming out of Lester into the town of Brandon, dirt road, Town Farm Road? Just tell them they can't go through. Where are they going to turn around? You going to back them all the way back through Lester to Route 7? There's, there's no place to turn around.
Do you happen to know what the Lester speed limit is?
I have no idea.
35.
I think it's 35.
35 of the Lester side?
35.
But I'd like to say, I've been there 47 years and the dirt road traffic has nothing, don't even compare with the pavement from Segment 6, 73. Anywhere from 100 trucks a day go by my house. I'm not complaining. I know progress, but this deal with the dirt road is really ridiculous. That's the shortest way to get back. The Route 7 is the easiest to maintain, like Sean said, all you got to do is grade it once in a while. After this Segment 6 and Route 73 project is over with, Town Farm Road is going to be a disaster. If you haven't looked it over, somebody should because the culverts are dropping, the sites in the road are giving in and...
The paving part of the town?
Yes.
So where, where did that come and we just, what we just did on Town Road with the plastic paving, we get a grant for it?
Yeah. Well, I understand what you're not doing, I understand why you're not doing a nail because this is all going on, but...
It's definitely on the radar if they're doing that and us to do the culverts and the gym and everything right, so...
But like I said, the people that complain on the dirt road at Town Farm Road, they don't know what traffic is.
Comments, sir? Yes?
Yeah. I, I happen to drive where DNF runs spit outlying, Mr. Moore. Probably, I'm going to tell you, 90, 95% of our roads go north. We have an asphalt plan up in Middlebury and most of the roads are aggregate for the asphalt plan. To send us around the pavement, you're adding a lot of distance, a lot of time, we're burning a lot more fuel, we're going to cross two bridges. The one on Town Farm Road is listed in good condition by the state, but you can't put a truck and a car through there at the same time. Somebody's got to stop. The bridge up on North Street is listed in fair condition. The road, you guys just put money into the road up there, fix it up. It's not very wide. There's a lot more pedestrians this time of year. There's a lot more bicycles running up that way. It just doesn't make, and as a taxpayer, it doesn't make any sense to me. And the last time Sean graded, when Sean graded the road this spring with all the rain we had, it stayed in great shape for a long time that he graded it and he graded it well.
Thank you. Comment from the board? Pleasure in the board?
I'd like to make a motion to take the no-through truck signs down and do what we need to do with closest 25 mile an hour safety limit on the dirt section of the road.
Mr. Wyman moves, Mr. Bailey seconds, to remove the no-through truck signs in the dirt portion of Town Farm Road and to pursue the traffic study with an eye toward reducing the speed limit on the dirt portion. Discussion?
Question for Dale. So you, you work for one of the trucking companies that goes in and out of there. So the complaint we have had on the one is the safety and the speed of a truck and harassing a particular family. Is there, do you see any possible way that we can defer that to them, like going to their pits and saying, you know, we're back open that way and we...
Did you see how he's being harassed?
That's what it is.
I mean, we drive out and we go back and forth by his house. That's, that's, you know...
I'm not saying you're harassed. I'm just saying people have harassed him.
I mean, and the chief and some of the police is on the radar up there and I don't know. I mean, I don't know if you've ever caught any of the trucks going way over the speed limit or not, but...
I'd like to hear what his comments are. I mean, I've personally driven up there at least 25 times. If I'm out in town and I'm anywhere over that road, I may go up the road, turn around after, hit the Lester and come back down. Maybe look for, is there a place for trucks to turn around? Do I see anyone going fast? Do I see any trucks? I mean, almost every time I drive up there, I don't even see a truck, never mind the trucks going fast. So I'm, you know, that's why I'm in favor of allowing the trucks to go that way and I feel we can grade the road.
I come down through there now. I probably, 25 miles an hour is probably as fast as I go.
Further discussion? Please vote. All in favor of removing the no-through truck sign from the dirt portion of Town Farm Road and pursuing the traffic survey with an eye to reducing the speed limit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? You guys have it? Okay, so that's where we are. We're committed to that course of action. You arrange a traffic survey with RRPC or someone else does?
So with that in mind, just remember that with all of these other traffic changes that we have downtown and elsewhere, the chief and I started working on, it's just, I'm a little crazy, but we are going to have to, the board's going to have to adopt a new traffic ordinance for the entire town. So that's going to have to, when we wrap up Segment 6 here in a few months, that's going to have to...
Is that something we can do what we sometimes do and assign to a select board members in order to kind of work it up and bring it to the full board in workshop style? Is that reasonable way to do that?
Sure.
And we should wait, you're...
Well, we started to...
Wait till Saturday?
Yeah, because we're going to have some changes down here with stop signs and intersections and, you know, a portion of Route 7 that's brand new that we don't even, really have a name for right now, so we have two churches that don't really have an address. I mean, they do, but they're not Union Street and Harrow Street anymore, so we're going to have to...
So will remind us of that later in the call if we remember. Item six, approval for paving, request for reimbursement from TA 65. Mr. Appleton, what project is this?
So this is the McDonald Road, smally paving. This was our Class 2 Highway Grant and this is our reimbursement, so just looking for some board approval and signature coming in.
And the municipality portion, is that from the article, the voted article or is that from the budget?
So we do, yeah, I don't think we used it all of, so I've got a little, I think we've got some big ones. I've got, I was just saying on that tonight when I got here, so...
So this is, we're prescribing the correctness of the statement that we're accepting the work that's been done and we want the reimbursement coming off of your sleeve.
Correct.
How's the board?
Make the motion that we sign the request for reimbursement, this is a project cost $253,440 and regain reimbursement of $175,000. That's how expensive it is to put baby in.
Mr. Bailey moves and Mr. Coolidge seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of requesting reimbursement from McDonald Road, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. You guys have it?
Roughly $80,000 a mile.
$80,000 a mile?
For what they did on McDonald Road.
So that was not just a split topic, it was some additional...
No, it was probably a grant of, when we pull things out and brace things out, about $2,000 a mile.
Right, but I'm saying that was for McDonald, basically. I'm just thinking...
We base it and then we'll look at...
Think about the Dr. 73, think about Park Street. Park Street, yeah. So, yeah.
Item seven, we have warrants. First one is $1,335,896.97. What's the motion?
Please vote to approve that warrant.
Mr. Coolidge votes to approve, they're second.
Second.
Mr. Wyman seconds. Any questions for the town manager on any invoices on the warrant or any comments from the board? Comment from the town manager?
Just a note with the $960,000 of that goes for school tax. And to, relative to $3,000 on the district, the order doesn't add for reimbursement.
So in reality, this is a fairly routine bill, except we're passing through the school tax which the town collects and the fire district looks like tax. Discussion? No questions?
No? Be sure.
All in favor of approval, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? I have it. Item B, Route 7 Construction 1, $734,677.32.
I make a motion to approve Route 734, 677, 32.
Mr. Bailey moves to approve. Mr. Coolidge seconds. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman stands. Item C, the Bridge 114, warrant, $12,823.8.
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve. Mr. Coolidge seconds. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? You guys have it? The select board will recess now so that we can say goodbye to each other and then we will reconvene for the executive session that was formed on the agenda and then return to public session for any required action in the general.